Testing, testing. It's working, but no one can hear me. All right, I'd like to make an announcement before we get started tonight. So some of you may have noticed, the beginning of this board meeting is ultimately a student recognition program. Right now, it's going to be very hard to get our board meetings started because we have no way of recognizing our students. So we understand that many of you are here to voice your concerns or your opinion regarding another issue. But what we'd like to do is run, we have to run the student recognition program first. So we have to have, we have to have room for the students to get through. We have to have seats for our students. And so what we're asking for is, on your own, independently, if you're here for the second part of the meeting after the student recognition program, if it would be possible for you to leave your seats, wait in the lobby, you could certainly stand around the perimeter of this area, and then at that point, the board meeting will go, will go into a 15-minute recess to allow the families to take photos of their children for the recognition program, then we'll start the rest of the board meeting. So at this point, like I said, we'd like to do that where everyone kind of does that on their own. Okay? Thank you. And then we'll get on with the rest of the meeting. All right, folks, we still need some more seats. So for those of you who are not part of the recognition program, if you're not part of the student program, if you're not a parent or a student from the district, if you could please go to the back of the room.
Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board. Ladies and gentlemen, if we can't have cooperation, nobody's going to get a chance to speak. All right, we're honoring students this evening. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting, November 16, 2023, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting for date, time, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would like to extend a warm welcome to this distinguished gathering at the National Merit Scholarship Awards Ceremony this evening. This evening, we celebrate exceptional academic achievements of outstanding scholars whose dedication in pursuit of knowledge exemplifies the highest standards of education. Congratulations to each and every one of you being honored here tonight. Your hard work and intellectual curiosity have set you apart. It's my privilege at this time to introduce our superintendent of schools, Dr. Mark Toback, whose leadership and commitment to the educational excellence have made a lasting impact on the field. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Toback.
Thank you, Mr. Toback. It's certainly an honor for me to be here tonight. I am very excited to be a part of this program, and I'm very excited to be the academic leader of this school district. All you, all of you are a wonderful reflection of our school system, your teachers, and the administration. For our audience in council chambers and for all the viewers at home, I would like to start our National Merit AP Scholar and College Board Recognition Program by sharing more information about the different scholarship programs and recognition you will hear about tonight. This is a very important part of the program because it gives the community a sense of this recognition's significance. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition to recognize student achievement and to award undergraduate scholarships. Established in 1955, the program is open to all U.S. high school students who meet participation requirements. Scholarship winners are chosen on the basis of their abilities, skills, accomplishments, without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. Most scholarships awarded through the National Merit Program are sponsored by approximately 400 corporate organizations and higher education institutes. Each year, educators in about 21,000 high schools across the country provide the opportunity for students to participate in the program. Typically, over 1.5 million students in about 21,000 high schools enter the National Merit Scholarship Program. Some 50,000 entrants qualify for program recognition, meaning that they may receive recognition from the program. But in the end, it's only the top 3% of all students who receive recognition. Approximately 8,500 outstanding students from across the country receive scholarships for college undergraduate study. The total awarded scholarships are valued at approximately $39 million. So what is a National Merit Scholarship Committed Student? In late September, more than 2/3 of the approximately 50,000 high schoolers on the PSAT received letters of commendation in recognition for their outstanding academic promise. Committed students are named based on a nationally applied selection index score that may vary from year to year. Although committed students do not continue in the competition for National Merit Scholarships, many of these students become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. Also, for advanced placement or AP scholars, every fall, the AP program recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams. AP Scholar awards come in different levels and types. An AP Scholar is granted to students who receive scores of 3 or higher on three or more AP exams. AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of 3 or higher on four or more of these exams. AP Scholar with Distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams and scores of 3 or higher on five or more of these exams. There's also the National Hispanic Recognition Program. A student must meet the requirements to become eligible for the National Hispanic Recognition Program, including taking the PSAT in October of their junior year, achieve a minimum qualifying PSAT score, possess a GPA of 3.5 or higher, identify as Hispanic, and be a permanent resident of the U.S. or a U.S. territory. There's also the National African-American Recognition Program Scholar. The College Board recognizes, I'm sorry, awards academic honors to sophomores and juniors who take eligible administrations of the AP, PSAT, or PSAT-10 exams, have a GPA of 3.5 or higher, and identify as African-American, Black, Latino, Indigenous, or Native, and/or attend a high school in a rural area. So with all that being said, congratulations to all of our students for receiving this recognition, and thank you for being such outstanding role models. Congratulations to your families for all the hard work they have done to support you in your studies. Congratulations to all of your teachers and administrators for their contributions and for helping to place you in a position to receive this recognition. It is a pleasure for the Board of Education, the administration, and the entire community to recognize you for your amazing academic achievements and for receiving some of the most significant academic recognition that a high school student can possibly earn. Congratulations to all of you and to your families. All right, at this time, I'd like to start the program by introducing Wayne Valley Principal Ken Palszuski.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Welcome, everyone. This is always, for Mr. Ruick, my counterpart over at Wayne Hills and myself, one of the greatest nights of the year for us because we get to recognize our students and always brings a lot of joy to us. Not to reiterate everything that Dr. Toback had spoken about already, but I did want to give you some numbers in terms of how many students for our district are getting recognized tonight. For our National Merit students, we have 17 students. So we talked about the top 3%, I think Dr. Toback said, 17 of them are sitting in this room. So we're really proud of them. In terms of our AP scholars, you will, we will recognize 21 of them this evening. AP Scholars with Honors, there will be 10 students being recognized. And AP Scholars with Distinction, we will recognize 23 students this evening. Before I turn it over to Mr. Ruick, I just once again, I want to again, once again, want to congratulate our students on both sides of town. The achievements that these students have and the amount of work they do, the study and the success they have is impressive, and that's a testament to them, you as their families, our teaching staff, all across the board, starting in kindergarten. Most of our students have been in our district for 13 years now, and we're just so very, very impressed with the quality of education that our students get, and you obviously can see the results that we have. So congratulations to you all. Have a great evening. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ruick.
Again, thank you all for being here tonight, and again, congratulations to all of the honorees and to their families. A big congratulations. As Mr. Palszuski said, this is a wonderful night. The College Board points out specific areas of recognition based on students of color or of Hispanic origin. And so tonight, we're going to have eight recognitions of the National Hispanic Program Scholars. We have eight, and we have one African-American recognition scholar this year. So congratulate those special honorees as well. And with that said, we're going to start our recognition of name reading, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Harrison Bender, School Counselor at Wayne Hills. There you go, Mr. Bender.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Harrison Bender, and I'm one of the lead school counselors at Wayne Hills, and it's my pleasure to be here to help honor our Wayne Hills students tonight. To begin with, we have Baslin Assad. Baslin is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He is most proud of creating and testing a Cube satellite at MIT's summer program. Baslin has earned an 800 on the math section of the SAT and a 36 on both the math and science sections of the ACT. He's applied to RPI, University of Illinois, Rutgers, and Purdue, and would like to study aerospace engineering. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have Julie Bay. Julie is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Honor. Throughout her time at Wayne Hills, Julie is most, has most enjoyed being an officer of the National Art Honor Society for two years in a row. She is applying to Cornell, University of Pennsylvania, and Carnegie Mellon University, and aspires to study civil engineering. Congratulations. Adith Yaram Balaji. Adith Yaram is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He is most proud of mobilizing the Wayne Hills Green Club to plant a pollinator garden in the abandoned Sheffield Park, as well as earning a perfect score in the math section of his SAT. Adith Yaram is applying to Rutgers, NJIT, Stevens, and RIT, and would like to study environmental engineering. Congratulations. Next up is Brandon Wong. Brandon is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He is most proud of being a member and president of the Wayne Hills Marching Band, and how much he's grown as a person in the organization, as well as earning an 800 on the math section of his SAT. Brandon hopes to study computer software engineering at Princeton University. Congratulations. All right, we have Vivek Lemay. Vivek is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He is most proud of leading the initiative for creating a science tutoring program for struggling, struggling Wayne Hills students as the president of the Science National Honor Society. Vivek helps to study aerospace engineering at either MIT, Georgia Institute of Technology, University of Michigan, or the University of Illinois. Congratulations. Next is Moksha Madapur. Moksha is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. Placing first at state sectionals as a member of the Wayne Hills varsity girls' bowling team is the accomplishment she is most proud of. Moksha plans on studying mathematics and statistics in college. Okay, Austin Ron. Austin is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He has won national gold and silver medals for the 2022 Scholastic Art and Writing Poetry Competition, and has also scored an 800 on the math section of his SAT. He has applied to Boston College, Boston University, Wake Forest University, and Georgia Tech, and would like to study finance. Congratulations. Okay, next we have Angad Singh. Angad is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He is most proud of his acceptance to the New Jersey Governor's School in the Sciences. Angad is hoping to attend Princeton, Harvard, John Hopkins, or the University of Pennsylvania to study biology and neuroscience. Next is Ishan Sinha. Ishan is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. Winning the Congressional App Challenge, becoming tennis team captain, and scoring an 800 on the math section of his SAT has been his proudest accomplishments. He would like to study computer science or bioinformatics at Cornell, Georgia Tech, Carnegie Mellon, or UC Berkeley. Congratulations. Okay, Summer Shripada. Summer is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. Being the co-stage manager for Wayne Hills Theater is her most proud accomplishment, along with earning an 800 on the math section of her SAT. She would like to study music education in college. Congratulations. All right, next we have Brendan Carroll. Brendan is an AP Scholar with Distinction, and he is most proud of being a three-sport varsity athlete and being recognized at the league or county level for each, most recently earning first-team all-county for cross-country this season. Brendan is still contemplating what he would like to study in college. Kevin Hart. Kevin is an AP Scholar with Distinction, and he is most proud of scoring a 1510 on his SAT. He is applying to Purdue, University of Michigan, University of Maryland, and University of Illinois in hopes to study computer science. Congratulations. Pritham Kumar. Pritham is an AP Scholar with Distinction, and he is most proud of being nominated from Wayne Hills to the NJ Scholars Program and being a part of many honor societies. He is hoping to attend either University of Michigan, University of Maryland, RPI, or Georgia Institute of Technology to study bioengineering. Congratulations. Next is Radha Pingal. Radha is an AP Scholar with Distinction, and her biggest accomplishment has been winning the county championship for varsity tennis two years in a row, as first doubles her junior year, and as third singles her senior year. She is especially proud of making third singles and becoming captain of the team. Radha is interested in Carnegie Mellon, Northeastern, NYU, and Tufts to study cognitive science. Congratulations. All right, next is Rand Alcibabi. Rand is an AP Scholar with Honor, and she is most proud of earning this very honor. Rand is still contemplating what she would like to study in college. Congratulations. Okay, we have Evan Biller. Evan is an AP Scholar with Honor and National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. He is most proud of his commitment to four years of Wayne Hills Marching Band. Evan has applied to Yale, Columbia, TCNJ, and Lafayette College with a goal of studying neuroscience. Congratulations. Okay, next up is Callie Ng. Callie is an AP Scholar with Honor, and she is most proud of holding the record for the Wayne Hills girls' swim team 100-yard brushstroke event. She is applying to Lafayette College, Villanova University, Boston College, and Georgetown University, and would like to study biochemical engineering. Akshat Prakash. Akshat is an AP Scholar with Honor, and he is most proud of placing second in the RidgeHacks 2022 competition. He plans to study computer science in college. Congratulations, Akshat. Okay, next we have Trevor Smith. Trevor is an AP Scholar with Honor, and he is most proud of scoring a 1580 on his SAT. He is applied to the He is applied to the University of Maryland, University of Michigan, Georgia Institute of Technology, and Northeastern University, where he intends to study computer science. Congratulations. Okay, next is Ariana Aray. Ariana is an AP Scholar and National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. She is most proud of scoring a 5 on her AP Psychology exam. She is hoping to study preoccupational therapy at the University of Pittsburgh, University of Florida, Boston University, or University of Miami. Thank you. Catherine Calucci. Catherine is an AP Scholar, and she has won first place in NJ DECA's Northwest District Competition for the professional selling event. Catherine has applied to Syracuse University, Babson College, Cornell University, and Penn State, and would like to study marketing. Congratulations. Samuel Dorfman. Samuel is an AP Scholar, and his proudest accomplishment throughout high school is having been selected for the New Jersey Scholars Program. Samuel plans to study mechanical engineering at Maryland or Lehigh. Samuel plans to study mechanical engineering at Maryland or Lehigh. Colin is an AP Scholar and he is most proud of being a Physics Olympics event champion. He has applied to Rowan, NJIT, Rutgers, and Stevens to study engineering. Congratulations. Eric is an AP Scholar and earning a place on the high honor roll during his junior year has been his proudest accomplishment. Eric would like to study computer engineering at Virginia Tech, University of Maryland, Boston University, or RPI. James is an AP Scholar and his proudest accomplishment at Wayne Hills has been playing varsity basketball. He is hoping to study finance at either USC, University of Miami, NYU, or Boston University. Congratulations. Emily is an AP Scholar and she is most proud of being the president of the Wayne Hills National Honor Society, a member of the Science and Italian National Honor Society, and a student ambassador. She has applied to Lehigh, Villanova, Fordham, and Boston College and would like to study biology on the pre-med track. Congratulations. John is a National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar and his proudest accomplishment has been moving on to the Winter Track State Group Championship in 11th grade. He has applied to the University of Virginia, University of North Carolina, University of South Carolina, and NC State and plans to study business. Okay, now I would like to take a quick moment to honor three students who couldn't make it here tonight. The first would be Dara Golden, who is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. Next is June Paik, who is an AP Scholar. And lastly, Faith Weisberg, who is a National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. Congratulations to all of our honorees and thank you, everyone. I am now going to pass it along to Dr. Moreno. Thank you. We have one more Wayne Hills honoree, and that is Michael Chen. Michael is a National Merit Scholarship Competition Student and AP Scholar with Distinction. He is most proud of reaching a 1600 elo in rapid chess. And as well, earning an 800 on the math section of his SAT. He is hopeful to attend either Cornell, UPenn, Brown, or Georgia Tech to study computer science. Congratulations.
I'm Dr. Moreno and I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Wayne Valley High School. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce our National Merit AP Scholars and College Board National Recognition Scholars for Wayne Valley High School. First is Roberto Cisneros. Roberto is a National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. His proudest accomplishments is performing at the State Gala with the Symphonic Band in 2022. He hopes to attend either Drexel, Berkeley, or William Patterson and major in audio engineering and/or recording arts. Safa Ahmad is an AP Scholar. Her proudest accomplishment has been throwing a charity basketball event in 2020 with her Afghan community. It has raised thousands of dollars for Afghan refugees during the time of a takeover that risked many lives. Her hopes are to attend either New York University, Seton Hall, Columbia University, or Montclair University and major in dentistry. Hafsa is an AP Scholar. Her proudest accomplishments has been her academic choices. She chose the rigorous classes that Wayne Valley had to offer in order to challenge, which in turn has made her get to where she is today. Her hopes are to attend either University of Pennsylvania, John Hopkins University, Northeastern University, or Lehigh University and major in biomedical science and engineering. Gabriela Batelli is an AP Scholar. Her proudest accomplishment is getting a five on her AP Bio exam since she worked hard for it all year. Her hopes are to attend either Northeastern University, New York University, Boston University, or University of Pennsylvania and major in biology towards the pre-med track. Sarah is an AP Scholar. Her proudest accomplishment is being the senior news and features editor for our school newspaper Smoke Signals. Her hopes are to attend either Georgetown, University of Maryland, Rutgers University, or University of Virginia and major in nursing. Matthew Burke is an AP Scholar with honors. His proudest accomplishment is winning the Ice Hockey County Finals and making it to the state semifinal sophomore year. He hopes, his hopes are to attend either the University of Delaware, Worcester Polytech Institute, University of Connecticut, or NJIT and major in mechanical engineering. Gabriela is a National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. Her proudest accomplishment is getting to be captain of the cheer team. Her hopes are to attend either Clemson, Penn State, or Michigan State and major in nursing. Zachary is an AP Scholar with honors. His proudest accomplishments is wrestling in the region qualifier. He hopes, his hopes are to attend either Stevens Institute of Technology, Villanova, or Rensselaer Polytech Institute and major in computer science. Jacob Kurs. Jacob is an AP Scholar. His proudest accomplishments are winning the county title for lacrosse junior year. His hopes are to attend Muhlenberg College to play lacrosse and major in political science and international relations. Warren is a National Merit Commended Scholar and an AP Scholar with Distinction. His proudest accomplishments are taking more difficult classes than he originally intended to and glad that his, glad that his family pushed him to try harder. His hopes are to attend either Seton Hall or Montclair State and major in accounting. Savreen is an AP Scholar with distinction. Her proudest accomplishments are winning the counties in her junior year for second doubles in girls tennis. Her hopes are to attend either Rutgers University, the University of Maryland, Penn State, Stevens Institute of Technology, and major in civil engineering. Ava is an AP Scholar. Her proudest accomplishments is being part of the Wayne Valley Girls Soccer State Champion Team. Her hopes are to attend either University of Maryland, University of Connecticut, Penn State, or Rutgers and major in business. Izzy is an AP Scholar and a National African American Recognition Program Scholar. Her proudest accomplishments is winning the Most Dedicated for the Blue Team in SDA for the 2021 season. Her hopes are to attend either University of Michigan, University of Georgia, University of Florida, or University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and major in business. Caleb is a National Merit Commended Scholar. His proudest accomplishments is getting a 1500 on his SATs. His hopes are to attend either Gettysburg, TCNJ, Oswego, or Connecticut College and major in computer and/or political science. Milan is an AP Scholar with distinction. His proudest accomplishments is being a nine-time Athletic Scholar awardee. His hopes are to attend either University of Pennsylvania, John Hopkins University, Duke University, or Rutgers University and major in biomedical engineering towards the Matthew is an AP Scholar with distinction. His proudest accomplishment is being the varsity sprinter for track and field. His hopes are to attend either NJIT, Stevens Institute, Georgia Tech, or Virginia Tech and major in mechanical engineering. Abigail is an AP Scholar. Her proudest, proudest accomplishment is playing four years of soccer in college. She wants to major in biology towards the pre-med track. Jake is an AP Scholar. His proudest accomplishment is being an Eagle Scout. His hopes are to attend either Clemson, UGI, Elon, or UNC Chapel Hill and major in finance. Anika is a National Merit Commended Scholar and an AP Scholar with distinction. Her proudest accomplishment is being recognized by the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, along with getting a 790 on the SATs for both math and reading and writing. Her hopes are to attend either Yale, Brown, UC Berkeley, or NYU and major in history and political science. Megan is a National Merit Commended Scholar and an AP Scholar with honors. Her proudest accomplishment is being the top 10 in her class and receiving a perfect score of 800 on the math section of the SATs. Her hopes are, her hopes are to attend either RIT, Temple, or BU. Evan is a National Merit Commended Scholar and an AP Scholar with distinction. His proudest accomplishment is starting the Wayne Valley Chess Club in 2022. In college, he wants to major in computer science. Katherine is an AP Scholar with distinction. Her proudest accomplishment is being promoted at work. Her dedicated drive and dependability are some of her strongest qualities. Her hopes are to attend either University of Michigan, Notre Dame, Purdue, or the University of Maryland and major in computer science. At this time, I would like to recognize the following students who were unable to attend tonight. Matthew Caleb, an AP Scholar. Ali Ebeali is an AP Scholar with honors. Alexander Hedo is an AP Scholar and a National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. James Sun is a National Merit Commended Scholar and an AP Scholar with distinction. Gabriela Taveras is an AP Scholar and a National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. Thank you and congratulations again to all of our students.
You want to give the board members a chance to talk to the students first?
Mr. Pizakis.
Congratulations to all our students. You've accomplished a lot, and I know this is going to be a great senior year for all of you, and I hope you get into all the colleges that you're interested in.
Congratulations to all of you. What an impressive group, I'll say. You know, we don't educate you, but we're proud of you anyway. And congratulations to your parents, who I'm sure are very proud this evening, and a lot of that started at home. So kudos to all, and I hope you as well get into the college of your choice and have a great career. Keep us posted.
Mr. Doudin.
Folks, congratulations. It's a wonderful honor. I want to apologize to all the parents because everybody's taking their picture. My face is in the background, so you can kind of block that out there. Your accomplishments, they're embarrassingly good. I always talked about how things are embarrassingly great, and Wayne, your accomplishments are embarrassingly good. So pat yourselves on the back. Congratulations. Way to go, mom and dad. Way to go, guys. Go out there and rule the world.
Mrs. Wintek.
Yes, I want to add to the congratulations. So very, very proud of you. I know all of you, or many of you, do a lot of extracurricular activities and you're very busy, so this is an amazing accomplishment. So really proud of you and kudos to your parents, too. Well done.
Mr. Barryson.
I'm really impressed with not just the academic achievements you've had throughout this, but also the personal achievements that you've had along with these. So many additions that you have that actually push yourselves forward. Don't stop now. You can keep going and you can go as far as you want. I am very proud of everything that you have done, and I really congratulate you and your parents.
Mrs. Yorozan.
Congratulations to all our Wayne Valley and our Wayne Hills students and your parents. This is just the beginning of your story. We are so very, very proud of you and we're glad to call you ours. Congratulations.
Mr. Duffy.
If you guys think you want to hear anything else from us, you don't. Go home. Enjoy.
Ladies and gentlemen, in closing tonight, I'd just like to say a few things. Your commitment to education is truly commendable. Your influence extends far beyond the classroom, as we all see tonight. I would like to also acknowledge I would like to also acknowledge the indispensable role your parents played in this. Your unwavering support, encouragement, and sacrifices have played a major part in your child's success. To each and every one of you, I commend you for what you've done, and I wish you a great, great college career because you guys are going to some really great places. Thank you.
Dr. Toback.
Okay, so students, just very quickly, I think you'll like this part of the program, so if you could have a seat for a minute? Okay? And also our parents. Because what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a moment to recognize both high schools for a significant accomplishment, okay? So I'm happy to announce Wayne Township Public School District has been named to the AP Honor Roll. Each year, the AP Honor Roll recognizes schools across the country that have done outstanding work to welcome more students into AP courses. And this year, we're proud that both of our high schools, Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley, have earned a place on the AP Honor Roll for the school year. Enrolling additional students in AP courses is not enough. The AP Honor Roll recognizes schools whose AP programs are delivering results for students while broadening access. Schools can earn this recognition annually based on criteria that reflect commitment to increasing college-going culture, providing opportunities for students to earn college credit, and maximizing college readiness. The AP Honor Roll offers four levels of distinction: bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. So congratulations to the staff and students at both of our high schools for all the work that you did that led to this significant recognition. Right now, what I'd like to do is provide plaques for both of our high schools, so Mr. Palczuski can come up. That's for you. Okay? And also, Mr. Ruick. That's for you. Congratulations. Okay. Okay? All right, thank you very much, everybody. We'll take a 10-minute break right now.
Dr. Toback.
So, what I'd like to do is just make a statement in advance of the rest of our meeting. Okay, it's on. All right, so my statement I'd like to read is, as stated in our October board meeting, the effects of the Israel Hamas war are far-reaching and they impact the lives of Wayne students and staff who have cultural or even personal ties to Israel or Palestine. It's at times like this when public boards of education, including ours, must stand firmly and be committed to ensuring a safe, secure, and welcoming environment in our schools and our campuses. As always, we strive to create a climate that respects the civil and First Amendment rights of every student and staff member. This is especially important when we're faced with highly-charged and polarizing issues. Today, there was some inaccurate information that's been spread through the community regarding Board of Ed policy activity. There was a concern that the Board of Education was considering a policy that, according to some emails and social media posts, would punish and target Muslim and Palestinian students by limiting free speech and expression and to use Islamophobic and anti-racist guidelines to achieve this goal. Many of the emails indicated a belief that the Board of Education was planning to establish policies to reduce or restrict altogether student expression, especially as it pertains to clothing. Quite honestly, I was surprised to read some of the emails and social media posts because there is no factual basis for this concern. At no time did the Board of Education or Administration discuss any policy or plan resembling what was described. Every decision like this requires careful consideration by each board member. However, to be clear, we have stated many times that we will not tolerate disruptions to the educational environment. Based on further guidance from our attorney, the Board will not be taking action on Policy 2361, Acceptable Use of Computer Network Computers and Resources. This is item U5 on the agenda, which was shared. We have copies outside that were available for the public to review with the policy that was actually being discussed by the Board of Education. Administrator summary? Okay.
Mr. Moffett revisions the agenda?
We have the Administrator's summary, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Dr. Toback.
Okay, so I'm just going to provide the community with a brief summary report from the Administration. So, in January of 2022, Assembly Bill 3392 was signed into law, and this new law requires every Board of Education in New Jersey to have student representatives. The Wayne Board of Education is really a pioneer when it comes to involving students in Board of Education meetings and has had a decade-long history of doing so. So, I want to start my report tonight by welcoming our student representatives for this academic year. First, from Wayne Hills, Ava Roick. So, Ava's future plans consist of attending a four-year college and studying to pursue a legal career. She's involved in football cheer, the Spanish Honor Society, and the National Honor Society. She's also president of the following clubs: Student Council, SDA, and Student Ambassadors. Welcome, Ava. Next, we have from Wayne Valley, Catherine McGee. So Catherine is no stranger to Board of Education meetings, and she looks forward to her second year as the Board of Ed liaison for Wayne Valley. Catherine is finishing up her college applications this year. She will continue participating in the National Honor Society, Model UN, school newspaper, Smoke Signals, the National Art Honor Society, and the World Language Club. In the spring, she'll participate in outdoor track and field. After she graduates, she plans on majoring in biochemistry. I also have to provide the community with our HIB report. So, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township School District. There have been seven incidents of HIB investigated since my last report. Four of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIB. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Student representative report. Ava, welcome. You can go first.
Excuse me, Mr. President, if I could. If we can have everybody take a couple steps back from our student representatives. I don't think it's fair that we have the space and she doesn't, especially her first time here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Wayne Hills Patriot Marching Band completed a very successful season, performing their 2023 field show, "Storm Warning." The band completed throughout northern New Jersey and performed for many football activities. Season highlights include a gold rating at the NJMEA State Marching Band Festival, a first-place finish in All Caption Awards for Division 3A at the Bergenfield Band Competition, and a score of 88.5 at the TOB State Championships at Tom's River. Great work, all. On October 19th, 2023, the Wayne Hills National Honor Society inducted 68 new members into its society, bringing the total number of members to 148. The new inductees were recognized for their commitment to scholarship, leadership, service, and character. Family and friends were invited to celebrate with the new inductees in an evening ceremony led by NHS President Emily Scrobel. Inductees joined NHS officers onstage after the officer spoke briefly on and lit candles for the four pillars of the National Honor Society. After the ceremony, inductees and their guests enjoyed light refreshments sponsored by ShopRite. The Leo Club has been supporting the community in various ways and contributing to a multitude of causes. Forty Leos attended the NAMI New Jersey Walk at Middlesex County College and raised over $500 for suicide prevention. They also got to hear from many prominent speakers who struggle with mental health. The Leo Club raked and removed leaves from Camp Marcella to help clean up the campgrounds and create a safe setting for the special-needs campers who attend the Rockaway Camp in the summer. Some Leos took a break from the hard work and enjoyed the beautiful day with the fallen leaves. Wayne Hills environmental science teachers, Mr. Martino and Ms. Melik's class, are fostering northern diamondback terrapins, which are on the decline in the state of New Jersey. They will be fostered in the classroom until June and then brought back to the New Jersey Shore, hoping they live a long life. Congratulations to Mr. Green on being selected PCA County Tennis Coach of the Year, a well-deserved honor. Here are some highlights for the Wayne Hills High School Fall Athletic Season. 438 student athletes participated in the fall. Girls tennis and gymnastics were Passaic County champions. Girls tennis were Independence Division champions. Girls soccer were Independence Division co-champions. Sophia Bradley signed a national letter of intent to the University of Virginia for women's soccer. Skylar Thompson signed a national letter of intent to Seton Hall University for the women's soccer team. And finally, Kara Langbaum signed a national letter of intent to American University for women's track and field. Thank you for your time, and thank you for having me.
Ava, thank you, and welcome. Catherine, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Wayne Valley recently was included in the annual AP Honor Roll by the College Board. This is an enormous achievement and is a testament to the success of our students and our AP programs. Congratulations to our hard-working AP students and teachers. The Wayne Valley HOSA Executive Board performed a Gram stain lab for the school newspaper, and they were joined by our Superintendent, Dr. Toback, and Valley Vice Principal, Dr. Marina. The experiment distinguished different types of bacteria using the chemical and physical properties of the cells. During the month of October, Junior Aiden Magnow and the cross-country team collected sock donations as part of his annual donation to the Oasis Women's Shelter in Patterson. This nonprofit helps women and children succeed through various educational and social service programs and also supplies people in need of clothing and food. Last year, 350 pairs of socks were collected and donated to this admirable cause. The Wayne Valley Band Parents Association sponsored a fall craft show on October 15th. 100 quality artisans came to our school to showcase their woodwork, sculptures, photography, and more. On October 19th, Wayne Valley hosted our third annual job fair. Local employers set up in the main gym to provide information on seasonal and part-time jobs for high school students. Our very own Okon Aktepe, a sophomore advanced photography student, was published in the October issue of Wayne Lifestyle Magazine. His photo was a selective color edit of the front of a BMW titled "No Competition." Isabella Munoz, a junior also in advanced photography, was also published in Wayne Lifestyle Magazine's November issue. Her photo is of an envelope stamp titled "Sealed with Secrecy." Congratulations to both for these exciting achievements. In October, Wayne Valley was visited by alumnus Faith Amero. She came into journalism classes to talk about Montclair State University's communications program and her experience writing for the student newspaper of Montclair. Valley Journalism students benefited from reading Faith's articles and listening to her experiences as a freelance writer. On October 25th, the DECA Club Executive Board attended the COLT Leadership Conference at Keene University. The students learned about the essentials for running a DECA club, fundraising opportunities, and competition strategies. On November 2nd, we opened our doors to current 7th and 8th grade students and their families. The future high schoolers met faculty members, toured the school, and received information on current Wayne Valley programs. The Wayne Valley Media Center hosted a book-faced student photography competition in which students incorporated book covers into their photos in creative ways. Abby Catanzaro's photo won the contest, which was voted on by staff and students. Abby is also part of the first AP photography class at Wayne Valley. The Wayne Valley Environmental Club is participating in the NextTrek's Recycling Challenge this year. Their goal is to gather 1,000 pounds of plastic in the three large bins provided by NextTrek's. Once 1,000 pounds are collected, NextTrek's will send us a sustainably-made Trex bench. Here are the Wayne Valley athletic updates. 444 student athletes participated in the fall season. Girls volleyball became the 2023 Passaic County Champions. Boys cross-country also became 2023 Passaic County Champions. Girls soccer were the 2023 Big North Conference Independence Division co-champions, and boys soccer won the 2023 Big North Conference Independence Division. Boys cross-country became Big North Conference Independence Division Champions. And congratulations to Sarah Rodriguez for committing to the University of Texas for women's swimming. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Under T, Emergent Human Resources. Under number five, Approval of District Staff. We're going to revise number one, Brian Castellato. Revised effective date from December 8th, 2023 to November 17th, 2023, or as soon as possible. Under number five, Staff Replacing Stephanie Bengal at $84,675. Step 12 on the MA30 Guide to Joanne Tagliamonte at $84,575,000. Step 18 on the BA Guide of the WEA Salary Guide as approved. And under U, Emergent Policy, we will be tonight pulling Policy Item Number Five, which will be tabled for further legal advice. Moving on to Section X, Emergent School Resource Legal, we'll be adding number one, Approval of Retainer Agreement. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the retainer agreement dated November 16th, 2023, with the firm Corella, Byrne, Ketchy, Brody, and Agnello, PC, regarding participation in a lawsuit brought against social media platforms by school districts. And that is the end of the changes or revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open to the public for agenda items. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments will be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover?
No move.
Mr. Kazan, Mr. Giordano, anyone from the public wishing to speak? You can just get up. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to take executive privilege, and I'm going to allow -- I know there's a number of people here who want to speak to a particular issue. And there's a number of people here with children. In respect for you all, I'm going to allow you to speak to that item at the first public session, not make you wait to the end of the meeting to speak. So, if you'd like to speak to that item, please, you can do it at this time. I would also ask that we maintain decorum in here. Please, everyone here has a right to speak, and no one should be allowed not to have their say. But you also must keep your comments to yourself. Any outbursts of comments will result in the meeting being adjourned and possibly having the chambers cleared. So, please, we want to listen to each and every one of you. Please be respectful, that's all I ask. Thank you. Ma'am? Okay, hang on. It's not on. Sir, if you slide that button, we're good.
Mediamalwad, 62 Point View Parkway, Wayne, New Jersey. With a heavy heart, I stand before you this evening, burdened by the feeling of the silent frustration that has grown inside of me since October 25th. On that day, the Muslim Student Association at Wayne Hills High School was shut down. This decision has left me, along with all the members of this club, confused and frustrated. However, what we are not is surprised. There has been a long history of extra scrutiny and verbal attacks on our group, so the timing, we feel, is not a coincidence. Like any other club at my school, the Muslim Student Association was founded with the objective of promoting tolerance, raising awareness, encouraging thought-provoking conversation, and above all, creating a welcoming atmosphere where students from different backgrounds could come together and acquire knowledge about Islam. I am not standing here today to cast blame or point fingers. Instead, I am making a plea for this decision to be reevaluated. I feel antagonized that I must stand before you to discuss a situation where I must fight for a club that should be given the same required attention as any other club at Wayne Hills High School. How is it that a club created to encourage respect, tolerance, and understanding amongst students be abruptly shut down without any further explanation as to why? Our principals never gave any impression of being considered preaching, nor did we take any action that may have been interpreted as attempts to force or intimidate those who have participated. For the brief time it was in existence, our club planned for various events centered around giving back to our community and the student body through fundraisers, volunteer opportunities, and engaging discussions with guest speakers, an event which Wayne Hills seems to specifically dislike the idea of. Two weeks into October, the Muslim Student Association felt a shift in the attitude towards our club. Inquiries about managing our club were promptly met with short insufficient responses. When Wayne Hills postponed our discussion event, it was said to have been done so because the school needed to run a background check on the individual who would essentially be a guest speaker, a crucial step that until a few weeks ago, I was unaware of. The Muslim Student Association was provided with insufficient instructions on how to proceed with the guest speakers. In the end, the school failed to get back to us, and the Muslim Student Association shut down quickly after, our advisor abruptly resigning as well. Upon the creation of the Muslim Student Association, the school required that I emphasize our club's inclusivity, which, in my opinion, is completely understandable, given it is a new club that students are not usually accustomed to. The value of being welcoming to all has always been a large part of our club. In fact, our club slogan was, and I quote, "In unity lies strength." It appears that despite numerous flyers, posters, and announcements with emphasis on being an inclusive organization, I haven't sufficiently conveyed our openness to ensure the club's sustained values enough to keep it running. It is ironic that the Muslim Student Association was always being told to promote inclusivity, however, never felt a sense of inclusivity or welcoming behavior from the school since its initiation. In my hand here, I hold over 300 signatures from the student body of last year advocating for the initiation of this club at Wayne Hills. This alone proves that my voice you are listening to now is not alone. As a Palestinian-American, each day as I walk through the doors of school, I strive to make Wayne Hills a place where every student not only feels heard but valued. Along with the students in the Muslim Student Association, I can't help but wonder if Wayne Hills High School still upholds the values of diversity and support they claim to have for all students, even during this difficult period. Thank you for your time. I anticipate that we can advocate collectively to reinstate the Muslim Student Association at Wayne Hills High School.
That's a tough act to follow. Good evening, distinguished members of the Wayne Board of Education. My name is Mamoon Mustafa, 27 Vista Trail, Wayne, New Jersey, and I'm an attorney with a law practice in Wayne. I know this has already been decided, but I just want to put this on the record as a statement for our community. Two weeks ago, I heard the words "I don't care" echoed in these halls regarding a debate on free speech. I am here to tell you that I do care. As an officer of the courts, the rule of law is vitally important, and our Constitution must be protected. While the rule of law may not be important to some 5,000 miles away, where apartheid is practiced, where government officials are calling for the use of nuclear weapons on civilians, and much, much more, despite all of that, many people in this community and our country, including our government, stand with Israel, which is an exercise in free speech. Despite these being clear violations of international law, our laws in our country allow for and should always protect free speech. But what cannot happen is for us to apply racist apartheid-style laws here in the US and prevent some of us from exercising our free speech. While I understand some may feel emboldened to attack our free speech because our fundamental right to boycott was assaulted by the anti-BDS laws, our free speech must remain unscathed. I understand the words "Free Palestine" and the Palestinian flag are alleged to be intimidating. What is intimidating? Is it the word "free"? Then it must be Palestine, because I know it can't be free. What have those taught their children about Palestine for them to feel intimidated? My kids, who are growing up in Wayne, have asked questions, especially as they've watched videos of dead Palestinian children. They have also visited Palestine and have firsthand experience of apartheid. Despite that, despite that, I have never allowed my kids to be afraid or feel intimidated when they see others supporting Israel. Rather, I teach them that that is acceptable speech, even if we disagree. I have also taught them that there are many Jews who support Palestinians. In fact, my kids play on baseball teams in town, the Wayne Warriors. They play on basketball teams with other kids on their teams and teammates who are of the Jewish faith. These are kids, and I want my kids to love and engage with other kids, no matter their race or religious affiliation. This venue is not a substitute for hard work that we have to do as parents. As such, I am opening my home to anyone of any faith to come learn about Palestinians.
Sir, can you please wrap up?
I'm done. If you do not want to take the time to teach your kids, I certainly will, and I'm sure that there are many lined up behind me that will open their homes too. Thank you to the Board for your stand and support for free speech and following well-settled law. And in closing, in closing, "Free Palestine until Palestine is free."
Good, sir.
Hi, Alan A. Sarge, Wayne. For those of us who were taught or remember US history, Patrick Henry said something to the effect of, "I may not like what you have to say, but I defend to the death your right to say it." So, I'm not here to approve or condone what brought us here today. I wrote to all of you twice, so you already know why I'm here. Excuse me? I did, thank you. Let's see, where was I? I'm proudly not an attorney, but I will disagree with the notion that this matter falls under free speech. The Chromebooks and computers are Wayne School's property. They don't belong to you or me or any teacher or any parent or any students. Therefore, what happens with them is a reflection of the schools. More importantly, there are policies in place by the school board which govern the use of the computer's access as well as policies related to acts of bias. In the recent policy draft, it said that the computer systems are monitored, and I ask you, by whom, how, et cetera. At work, my laptop is monitored. I don't have free speech at work. Students don't have free speech on their Chromebooks. I commend Dr. Toback for his messages at the beginning of this conflict. He said that parents should be monitoring their children on social media, computers, et cetera. Now, we can't control, though, what's spoken about in the home or what is seen on the news, but we can control what's said and taught in our classrooms. We know that antisemitism is high in the schools. What is being taught in the classroom? I'm not talking about what's in the curriculum. I'm saying what's being said in the classroom? Is history being taught? Is constructive, respectful debate encouraged? We know from other controversial topics we've all faced here and spoken about that there are teachers who go rogue. How is what being taught and discussed in the classroom being monitored? By not taking any action today and hiding behind your attorney respectfully is a cop-out. You're inviting more issues, more anger, more social media misinformation, more crowds like this. And a controversial thought, and I really hesitated to say this, I was respectful to you. And a controversial thought, now I don't worry about saying it, I truly wonder what would have happened if the situation was reversed. I look forward to more discussion. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. I addressed this in the beginning of the meeting. We are going to have decorum in this room. If not, I will empty the room, and it's the last time I'm saying it. Everyone should have respect. Ma'am?
Kim Woodhour, and I live here in Wayne. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to consider the requests made regarding the profile pictures in the Google Classroom. As a reminder, for those who weren't in the room last meeting, the request was made on behalf of many religious groups in our community to remove all political and religious avatars on the Google Chrome profile pictures on our public school computers. This was put forth as a proactive way to ensure that all of our children feel safe in school, especially and in light of what's going on in the world around us. Our school-aged children are hopefully learning together, playing together, and sharing the positive experiences that our public schools offers without politics or religion. As adults, we understand that political discussions, memes, symbols, avatars of any kind can potentially be divisive and polarizing. Our children don't understand that. Public schools should always be a neutral and inclusive environment for all students, regardless of their personal beliefs or the beliefs being shared in their homes. With social media, the news, and other sources of information, there's very little escape as to what is going on across the world for our kids. I would hope our schools are that escape, that safe place. I truly hope the Board supports and passes the proposed policy and continues to I truly hope the board supports and passes the proposed policy and continues to support the notion that children of all nationalities, races, and religions feel safe in school, that they feel welcome in the homes of their friends, and they are proud of their community. I also hope the board continues to evaluate and put forth proactive measures that continue to support the safety and educational needs of our children. It would be silly to say that many of us, regardless of our beliefs, are not scared for our kids and for ourselves these days, because we are. As a community, we can do better. We can lead with kindness and support and do the right thing to help everyone feel safe in our schools. Thank you.
My name is Amin Jaludi. I live at 175 Park Lane in Wayne. And I am a little bit shocked and don't understand how any of us in this room with I could almost guarantee 99% of us, if not 100% of us, did not participate in the American Revolutionary War that guaranteed our freedom of speech, that guaranteed our right to voice our opinion, our right to wear a hijab, wear a yarmulke, wear an Indian turban, wear anything. That is what the American Revolution did for this country, and that's why the majority of our ancestors here migrated to this country, to voice our opinion, to have our children live in a free world where they could voice their opinion, where they could voice their religion respectfully and not harm anybody else. And I don't understand how we could be here talking about not allowing somebody to wear a kufiya or not allow somebody to wear a razor flag or not allow somebody to identify and shut down an MSA. Why would we shut down an MSA for students in high school? I don't understand. My daughters all graduated from Wayne High School. I still have two more children in Wayne High School, and they are all part of an MSA, whether they're NJIT in Montclair and Rowan Medical School, and it's all thank you to Wayne Education System, which now I don't understand why we're focusing on limiting their free speech, limiting their ability to express themselves, limiting their ability to voice their opinion about anything. And I don't know how my daughter wearing that is intimidating anybody. And I don't know how if a student comes in wearing a yarmulke is intimidating me. It shouldn't intimidate anybody. This is America. This is America. America, it's all yarmulke, hijab, turbans. This is what the American Revolutionary War did, and this is what our forefathers did. We should not be in here talking about restricting anybody's freedoms. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President, if I could. Just point of order. The item that I believe that everybody is having a converse about is Item 4.5, an emergent policy item, that was removed from the agenda today. So we're speaking about something that we've already taken off the agenda to come back to at a different time, correct? Okay. Just, all I'm saying is, as of right now, the board is taking, and by any means, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have taken this and have seen the outcry of the community of what this was put on the agenda. So we have taken it off the agenda in order to discuss it amongst ourselves, with the appropriate people of the community, the leaders of the community, whether it be the Palestinian group, the Jewish group, whoever, but that's why we took this off the agenda. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, that this is the reason that we took that off?
Plus legal reasons as well.
And legal reasons. So I'm just alerting the public that this is the reason that we made a motion, voted on the motion, to take this off, so that this can come to a more compromising, rather than you worried about whether a yarmulke or ehab or anything is intimidating in schools. We do not want that. By no means do we want anybody to feel intimidated in this school. And I know I speak for the rest of everyone on this dice. I don't have to look to my right or, well, nobody to my left, but I can tell you that. So we can continue on, and I have no problem sitting here, continuing on, but we're trying to come to a positive, a commutative agreement. Listen, what's going on 5,000 miles away from us is tragic, and you can have one side or the other agree or disagree. We all agree it's tragic. I can roll back a couple centuries ago when it was Ireland and England doing the same thing. It's tragic. We're all, history happens to repeat itself, and with lack of a better word, it sucks. It just happens to be doing this now. I understand, I understand both sides of what's going on. I just don't believe that this is the forum to go back and forth at a school board where the school is, the school board is saying, "We understand your side. We understand your side. We're working to make it congeal," that nobody is going to be disrespected, stood out on, bullied, any of that. We're not here for any of that, and I know I can, I talk for everyone on this board, from the superintendent all the way down, that this is not what we're here for. We have one of the best school districts in the state on top on that on the nation. This is a hiccup. We're working on it. But to have all of us here pointing fingers that, like I said, what we need to do is go back home and talk to our children and talk about the golden rule. Do unto others as you want others to do unto you. Not, it's not what's happening 5,000, it's, hold on.
Okay, all right.
It's not, listen, it's, I'll make this, I'll shorten this up.
All right, Sean, Sean, that's it.
It's not what's happening 5,000 miles away. We can't control that.
All right, Mr. Duffy, thank you.
As the president has said, please control yourself. We have no alternative but to take a recess or to adjourn the meeting. So please control yourself, and we'll continue with the public comment. But please, we're going to need decorum here tonight.
Sorry, thank you. My name is Tanya Martel, 10 Stone Hill Road. I'm a proud Jewish mother to two girls in the Wayne Public School system, elementary school to be exact. I'm the grandchild of many Holocaust survivors and children in hiding. At this point in the year, usually my biggest concern is making sure my kids feel included in holiday celebrations. For example, teachers include generic coloring pages, winter themes for parties, and writing prompts. Today, my biggest fear is, should my kids wear Hanukkah pajamas on Pajama Day? Will they be called a name? My concern is, should my daughters proudly tell their friends they are Jewish and do not celebrate Christmas? Will they come home upset because someone made an antisemitic slur? I've always taught my kids to be a proud Jew. Do I tell my kids to hide from their friends that we went to the town menorah lighting? Where do I draw the line? Do I? Anyone who knows my kids, including several people in this room, know they always speak fondly of our traditions. We invite our non-Jewish friends to our home for holidays every year, and my menorahs are already in my windows. I shield them from the news, from social media, but I can't shield them from antisemitism and hate in schools. I can hope that if they see anyone in school saying something they don't recognize, they are oblivious to what it truly means. However, it won't be that way forever. Antisemitism is high. Coming here tonight puts me and my family in a risk. Is my home next? Are my children next? Will my kid come home crying tomorrow because she was called an antisemitic name? No child nor parent in this meeting or this district can be an expert on the Middle East. I can't begin to scratch the surface in three minutes. Social media has taught me when there's a hot topic, everyone is an expert all of a sudden. How many of us became political experts in 2016, 2020, experts on Russia and the Ukraine? Were the COVID experts? I've also seen how easily everyone believes every ounce of media put out into the world. We just believe what we are told without vetting it ourselves. TikTok, Instagram, it's everywhere, and everyone is guilty. But what I am an expert in is protecting my children and teaching them both to be a proud Jewish female. I teach my kids to love and respect people regardless of what they believe. I'm an expert in resilience, because if not now, when? So I ask you this current board and those coming in to become the expert and protect all children, including mine, from antisemitism at all costs. If you won't protect my children, then who will protect their right to attend school without fear? My kids are one of a handful of Jews at their school, and yet I am probably one of the most scared parents right now, fearing what will happen next as they continue through their education.
Peace to all the ladies and gentlemen in this room and esteemed educators.
Excuse me, can you give your name and address, please?
Oh, so sorry. Jessica Baracall, I live in 1536 Route 23, Wayne, New Jersey. Peace to all the ladies and gentlemen, esteemed educators, and fellow parents and board members. I stand before you today as a proud mother of two daughters that attend Wayne Public School, as someone with an Ashkenazi Jewish Colombian heritage who has embraced Islam for the past 23 years. I want to express my deep gratitude for the inclusivity and respectful environment that the Wayne Public Schools have provided for my family since I have became a resident here in Wayne. In the world that we can't not sometimes have this division, but it happens, our community here in Wayne has amplified coexistence by allowing my children during Ramadan to pray and have a prayer room, have halal meals. So we have been exclusive. No one has never denied that here on this board. The acceptance of the division of religion backgrounds here that is happening by coming here is just by a blurb of a resolution that came popped up. Correct? That the freedom of speech was a kind of infringed because of the avatars that were being posted on our laptops for our children. So someone brought it up. We weren't that aware of it, so we came here to show you we support you, but we also don't want division to happen here right now. Having personally visited Palestine significantly times in the West Bank, I witnessed the impact of apartheid and the heartbreaking consequences it brings. It serves as a stark reminder of the importance of allowing our children to show their heritage in our public school system. As a Colombian-American, as a Dominican-American, Ashkenazi-American, Egyptian-American, Albanian-American, Palestinian-American, and so forth, that we have here in Wayne, New Jersey, today I urge all of us to continue fostering an atmosphere of inclusivity, protection for our children, and let us stand united against any attempts of sore division and instead celebrate the richness of our culture tapestry that we have here in Wayne. Our shared commitment to diversity is what makes Wayne truly a special place of our families to thrive. And yes, having one of the top public schools here in Wayne is why I moved here, for my children. One of my daughters has ADHD, and I saw that the AIP is amazing, and they're doing a great job for my daughter. Together, we could build the future for our children that is free from the shadows of segregation and equality that America has made years. We should not make that happen now and never. Let Wayne continue to shine as a model of unity where all our students, regardless of our backgrounds, can flourish and contribute to the vibrant tapestry of our community, especially our high school students that have an MSA. I really want to thank you for the embracing of the beauty of our differences and nurturing the environment where our children can grow and learn and contribute to the harmony of our community. Together, let's ensure that Wayne remains that beacon of unity and understanding for generations to come. I stand here to say Palestine will be free. And I will understand that some people might be blinded to not understand that our children need to have that freedom of speech regardless, and as me, myself, my background, like I told you, as my mother, a practicing Jewish mom. Thank you.
Ramsey Isa, 46, Augusta Drive, Wayne.
Today, I stand before you as both a concerned member of our community and a voice for those at risk of being silenced by a policy that would have been deeply insensitive and discriminatory. The policy in question aimed at penalizing students for expressing support for Palestine is an alarming manifestation of otherization and stems from a one-sided narrative prevalent in mainstream media. This narrative not only shapes perception but also has real-world consequences. A tragic example is the recent incident in Chicago where a child was stabbed 26 times by a man who claimed he was angered by what he was seeing and hearing about the events overseas. This heinous act was fueled by an environment of hate, a direct result of constant dehumanization of Palestinians by a one-sided narrative of mainstream media. We must strive to ensure our school does not contribute to creating a similar environment in the wake of tragic events overseas, where we've seen brutal killings of thousands of innocent lives on both sides, including 12,000 Palestinians, of which 5,000 are children. This policy seeks to disregard the suffering of one side, the Palestinians, and risk deepening the wounds by erasing their cultural identity. It creates an environment of hateful dehumanization by omission. For many American Palestinian students, expressing their culture and pride through symbols and colors is not just an act of identity, it's a coping mechanism. It's a way to process and deal with trauma of what is happening to their people overseas. To silence this expression is to deny them the fundamental means of emotional and psychological support. Additionally, the broad and unfounded accusation that Palestinian symbols and flags pose a threat to other students is mere fear mongering. It's a blanket statement, not rooted in fact, and should be addressed on an individual basis, based on concrete evidence rather than generalized assumptions. This policy not only infringes upon our students' First Amendment rights but also threatens the very foundation of freedom of speech and expression, pillars of our democratic society. It's critical to distinguish between expressing Palestinian pride and support for an oppressed people and antisemitism. The former is a legitimate expression of culture, identity, and human rights solidarity, while the latter is a condemnable ideology that targets and discriminates against the Jewish identity. They're different. Blurring these distinct lines only undermines the legitimate struggle of Palestinian rights and the fight against real antisemitism.
Sir, can you wrap up, please?
Labeling support for Palestinian humanity as antisemitic is an Islamophobic trope and a dehumanization tactic used to stifle valid discussion and advocacy, as organizations like the United Nations Red Cross and Amnesty International have shown. Advocating for Palestinians' well-being is a rightful stand for human rights. Moreover, this policy's effort to erase...
Your time is up.
10 seconds.
I'll give you five.
Moreover, this policy's effort to erase symbolism, color, and cultural elements from our school is a disturbing echo of the ethnic cleansing of Palestine in 1948, such as a comparison is grave and underscores the severity of erasing cultural identities. The American Palestinian Muslim community, along with those in solidarity with Palestine, are rightfully offended by the attempt... are rightfully offended by the attempt at cultural erasure.
Congratulations, Mr. Pavlik, on your election. Pamela Masick--
Can I make a point of order, Mr. President? We have residents waiting in line. And we're running out of time. Can we have the residents speak before nonresidents? Thank you.
No.
All right, ma'am. Ma'am, go ahead. You have your three minutes.
I have-- okay, thank you. May I?
Attorney said no.
Thank you. As someone who is American-Israeli, I was able to witness some things during my time living in Israel that I think would be beneficial here. I saw Arab-Israeli students work together on projects. They were not blinded by hate and prejudice, misinformation. Many were scarred by tragedy, but they came together. And I would offer a suggestion that the Board of Ed, you know, the schools, come together and consider some kind of project that the students can work together on to build that unity. If everybody is truly for unity here, then all sides will want to work together, raise money for victims, whatever it is, but to build unity and open up more dialogue if there's an issue. I'm not an attorney, but with a paralegal certificate, I just did a little research, right? Anybody can. On the freedom of speech issue, there are some things that freedom of speech does not include. Does not include the right to incite imminent lawless action. Does not include the right to-- Well, for obscenity for children, right? But let me just-- sorry, I didn't interrupt you, ma'am, just get-- Okay, "The Supreme Court has long interpreted the clause to protect against government regulation of certain court areas of protected speech while giving the government greater leeway to regulate other types of speech, including a handful of limited categories that the court has deemed largely unprotected." So as you're debating and working through this issue, some of the decisions of what we allow the students to do is to see, will it lead to-- what will it lead to? What you permit, will it lead to unprotected speech? Will it lead to violence or threat? There is threat, fighting words, defamation, incitement. So these are the things to consider when making those decisions. Not everything is considered protected freedom of speech. So we all want peace, we all want unity, and it would maybe a project with the students could be very constructive. It works in Israel, and it could work here. Thank you.
Hey, ma'am, you're going to be the last one who speaks at this open public session.
Just talk? Okay, so--
You're good.
Hi, so my name is Yasmin Mustafa. I'm on Went Lane. I don't have a speech prepared. I kind of just talk from the heart, and you know, it is what it is. And I agree with almost everybody in this-- Well, I do agree, because everyone brings a valid point, and everyone has something to bring to the table. I couldn't agree with you more, and I loved what you had to say. You know, it's history repeating itself. And what people don't understand, that what's happening in Palestine, it's their history, it's their present, and it's their future. And I completely-- I work in a urban school, and the majority of the students, they're black. And I spoke to my principal today, and I spoke to him about this board meeting. And he goes, "You know, that's not fair, because I don't look at every white person and think KKK." And I know, everybody just looked at me like, "What?", but it's true. And you know, if we're all going to look at the person in front of us because of who you are and what you are-- I'm not just pointing, you know, I'm just-- So of who you are and what you are, and I'm not just-- You know, so what good of a person am I? Shouldn't you start with you? And if you're bringing this to the school-- Like, I've been in Wayne, and my son was on a Chromebook. And the Chromebooks are, I guess, you know, they're from the board. They have certain things they can and cannot open. Through the internet, his friend showed him something inappropriate on the Chromebook. Things happen. I called it in with the principal, things happen. History does repeat itself, but at what point do we learn? At what point do we take history as a lesson? Isn't that, you know, besides what we learn in school? Isn't life a history? Let's teach our kids something more important. I couldn't agree with the teacher or someone that was here, the mother that spoke about her kids. I don't know where she is. But yeah, I couldn't agree more, because you know, what do you teach our kids? As Muslims that were labeled terrorists? What do we teach our kids? "No, sweetheart, it's okay, it's not you, don't listen to the public." For not too long ago, for wearing the hijab, you got it ripped off. Like, at what point do you stop? And for us to bring it into the schools, why not make like-- You know, put the kids together? Because before 1948, yes, the Jews and the Muslims were really good friends, and we were able to work together. Why not take that back from history and bring it here today? Why are we just so focused on the negative? And like, "Yeah, let's try to fix that." Nobody could fix nothing, but we could take what's right and make it better. And I think that's where the focus should be. Because when we go home and we tell our kids, "Listen, you can't wear that, because it's not allowed", what example are we showing them as in America? Liberty and justice for all, just not for you? When does it end? I ask you guys to be the role models and the voices and to be the-- You know, be good here and let it out. So we can one day look back and say that even though when Muslims were going through a bad time, or when this generation was going, or when the Israelis had issues, you had role models that were so diverse and made the right decision. Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'm going to close--
Mr. President, if I could, if we could allow--
No, we're closed now. There's another session--
We have another session?
Yes, okay. We have business we need to take care of first. All right, before we move to the agenda, committee reports. Mr. Battershell?
So the tech committee met yesterday with myself, Dr. Joe Bouchard, and Mr. Matt Giordano. We went over an AI update to be able to go through and look over how we are teaching our teachers to implement proper use of AI and where the appropriate times to be able to look at that is, how to use that, and also how not to use that within the various different educational systems that we have. We spoke about the Canvas rollout. First training is done for that at the moment, and we're waiting to roll that out across a set of lead teachers. And also the website update. We're looking for a winter rollout of that at the moment for training to begin shortly. And in addition to that, we spoke about Policy 2361. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Yes, the communications-- The-- Check one, two. I can't hear on this one.
Tell you what I'm gonna do.
Stand up.
I'm a teacher of 32 years. If you guys can't hear me, I'm definitely retiring tomorrow. Communications Committee met this afternoon. Several issues were discussed. We met with our people talking about the meetings in the referendum. It will roll out in January. We talked about how great the school district is. And one of the places we need to take a look at is our facilities. A lot of them are sometimes 50, sometimes 100 years old, depending on where they are. They are in desperate need of upgrading. We are a top-ranked academic, top-ranked school district on civics, on art. Our facilities are the next thing that we need to take a look at here. We discussed the two presentations, one from Dr. Tobak and the one from President Pavlik, and gave advice on that. And basically, you heard our whole point on this one. It's stay together, peace, love, and hope, and pray for those who are across the sea who are suffering here. That's my speech. Thank you.
Mrs. Kazan?
Hopefully, you can hear me. The facilities commit-- No, the facilities committee-- I can't yell, I'm not a teacher. The facilities committee met this evening, Mr. Prasakos, Mr. Battershell, Ms. Tibbetts, Mr. Romaine, Mr. Skibitsky, Mr. Moffett, and myself. We discussed the agenda items. We went over last meeting's minutes. We discussed operations, hills and valley. The blankets are ready to cover the fields. They've been seeded for the winter. The striping and repaving has been done to all of our parking lots. They put up a new flagpole at JFK. So now there will be two, one for the school flag and one for the American flag. There was a science room upgraded at Schuyler Colfax. We were able to do most of that work in-house and save the taxpayer money. We are continuing the work at the central office and the data center. That's been a months-long project, and we're slowly but methodically getting people back into the building. The Pareknis School, we're working on refurbishing that 100-year-old building so that we can make it an elementary school again in anticipation of growth in our enrollment. Again, we did a lot of that work that we're starting on prior to the referendum with in-house work and capital improvement money. The progress on the data center continues. We are about to order the generator and do some final approvals by the town. We discussed the referendum. We're still waiting for final approval on projects. And there were some Rod Grant approvals for the second round, and we're waiting to hear what our matching funds will be. Those are projects where the state will provide quite a bit of the money, and the rest of us-- The rest of it would have to come out of the money we were wisely putting into our capital improvement fund. Then we had our transportation update. We are still very much in need of bus drivers. If you know anyone who would like to be trained to be a CDL driver, we have an in-house training program. No cost to you, but of course, you have to come to work for us. So if anyone's interested in learning how to drive a bus and getting that CDL license, reach out to our administration. We currently have two that have completed the training or are waiting motor vehicle approval, and two more in training. The Aidan Lou vouchers are being processed, for those of you who are entitled to those. And we had motor vehicle inspections on all of our fleet, and 100% passed. So kudos to our mechanics and our transportation department. That is a monumental feat. That's pretty much it. But just to give you an idea of how stretched they are, just for one winter sport, 64 ski trips they have to provide transportation for, on top of the other sports and the day-to-day back and forth to school. Kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prasakos. Nothing, you're good. Mrs. Wintek?
Hello. So today, the Personnel Committee met. Don Pavlik, myself, and Paula Clark. We had reviewed the October 19 Personnel Committee minutes. We discussed job descriptions for Title I social worker and Title I counselor. We also had a discussion about adding permanent subs at each middle schools, and those positions will be posted in the next few weeks. We also reviewed the right-of-privacy policy for support staffs and teachers. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have some retirements tonight. Start to my right.
I'm gonna bother turning this on. Jill Schleck. Mrs. Schleck has served the District of Wayne tirelessly for the past eight years as a teacher of culinary arts. When needed, Mrs. Schleck has stepped up to take additional classes in order to support the program. Her love of food and her love of sharing that passion with the students will be greatly missed. She looks forward to spending her time in retirement, being a grandmother, and enjoying her family.
Let's see if it works now. Is it working now? Okay. Denise Malone. James Fallon Counselor Denise Malone has been a valued and respected member of the Wayne School System for over 18 years. The James Fallon community has been lucky enough that Ms. Malone has their elementary school counselor for over 14 of those 18 years. It would be impossible to list all the amazing things Ms. Malone has done for the James Fallon family. She is patient, kind, empathetic, and to all students who will come to her for help-- Excuse me. She has established a great open-door policy where students feel comfortable entering into her office at any time to discuss their issues. Her listening communication skills are her greatest strengths. Denise never hesitates to step up and assist any of her coworkers when they are in need as well. It is easy to see why she was recognized twice as the Governor's Educational Service Professional of the Year. Her positive attitude, calm demeanor, and caring personality will be greatly missed not only by her students, but by the staff and parents of James Fallon as well. We all wish Ms. Malone health and happiness in her retirement and a success in her future endeavors. Thank you.
Donna Santangelo. While these letters are always crafted with mixed emotions, and it is always difficult to have completed your final days working with a colleague, we simultaneously celebrate the career that has been completed. I am thankful for the opportunity to congratulate Ms. Donna Santangelo on her retirement and celebrate the start of a new journey for her. Ms. Santangelo began her career in Wayne at Wayne Valley High School as a social studies teacher. Throughout her professional journey, she transitioned into the role of school counselor. In this position, she helped countless students transition from high school to college or the workforce. After years of service at the high school level, Ms. Santangelo transitioned to the George Washington Middle School, where she has been a school counselor for the past eight years. During these years, she has celebrated much success at the counseling as well as along with the whole staff of our school. Although the celebrations continue at the George Washington Middle School, it is officially time for Ms. Santangelo to transition the efforts she has devoted to our school into the next chapter of her life that will be filled with new adventures and time to relax as well. We thank Ms. Santangelo for all she has done for the students and staff at the Wayne Township School District, and of course, at George Washington. Congratulations on your retirement. We wish you all the best life has to offer.
Ava Burke. Ms. Burke has served the District of Wayne faithfully for the past 23 years. Ms. Burke serves as one of Wayne Hill's gynon circuitrators. Previously, she served as the attendance person for the district before it was automated. She has always supported the needs of the students, staff, and school counselors. She has deeply cared about the school community and has done a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes for programs like the Senior Award Ceremony at Hills. She looks forward to spending her time in North Carolina with her family, and we wish her the best in her retirement.
This one is for Abdul Tahid. Abdul Tahid retired on November 10 after over nine years of hard work on our custodial team. Since 2014, Abdul's devotion to providing excellent service as a full-time night custodian at GW Middle School has been outstanding and exemplary. We wish him and his family happiness, and all the best, Abdul, in your retirement.
On behalf of the entire board and the community, I extend our heartfelt thanks to all our teachers and staff for your years of service. As you embark on a new chapter in your life, may be filled with joy and fulfillment and the well-deserved relaxation. Thank you to all. Do I have a mover for the agenda? Mr. Battershell? Mrs. Rigoloso? Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Wintek?
Yes.
Mr. Battershell?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we will open the meeting to the public for comment on any topic. Residents will have to state their name and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Giordano. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Rabbi--
Rabbi Mayor Verker from the Chabad Center here on Ratcher Road. I don't know which one of the 13 of us may have intimidated some people to leave the room because we lost half the crowd. Maybe it's the time. We heard a lot of interesting things tonight, and I come before you, as I've come in the past, I'm not new to this, I hope to remain not new to this. I come to express my feelings about certain things that were mentioned tonight, including issues of antisemitism, and I would like to state for the record, if there is one, everyone's always looking for experts. We have to get expert opinion on this, expert opinion on that. Something is legal, we gotta go to a lawyer, something's medical, we go to a doctor. I will state unequivocally, in this town, I am the authority on antisemitism. Look at me. I wear the yarmulke, I wear the tzit, I go to shul, I pray, I carry my Judaism everywhere I go with many of the members of our community here tonight, and I say again, I am the arbiter of what antisemitism is and what it is not. You can call it antisemitism, you can call it Jew hatred, you can use whatever term you like. One of those terms, I am the arbiter. So if you have an issue and you need an expert opinion, I've offered my services many times. I am here for the community to offer my expert proven opinions on what Judaism, Jewish people, what is anti-Jewish, what is hateful of Jews, I am the expert. No lawyer, no government official, no community activist other than myself in this town. I may have a little bit of an ego, and maybe I'll stretch it a little bit to the surrounding Passaic County area, because we're called the Chabad Center of Passaic County. So when it comes to that, I am the arbiter, and that's all I would like to say. And I would like to say as well that the children that I deal with, the students, the teens that I deal with, they do tell me about issues in school, and I do talk to them, and I've told them, certain things are not antisemitic. Certain things, don't worry about, you don't know. Many people are uneducated in many, many things. Many of the people behind me, many of the people in front of me are uneducated. I am uneducated on many things. This I am not uneducated about. I know what antisemitism and Jew hatred is. My grandmother was running out of her city of Myrtle, Belarus when the Nazis invaded and shot her mother as they were running out. I know what it is, and guess what? The world scoffed and laughed in 1933. The world scoffed and laughed in the 1800s when the pogroms came through Ukraine and killed 200,000 Jews. The world scoffed and laughed and smirked and gave their eyes in 1492 when the Jews were destroyed in Spain and Portugal, going back thousands of years until when the Romans destroyed our Holy Temple. I don't have to say any of that history, but I would like to end with this. In relating to the Jewish people, one of our greatest writers, Mark Twain, writes this. He has made, referring to the Jewish people, "A marvelous fight in the world, in all the ages, and has done it with his hands tied behind him. He could be vain of himself and be excused for it. The Egyptian, the Babylonian, and the Persian rose, filled the planet with sound and splendor, then faded to dream stuff and passed away. The Greek and the Roman followed and made a vast noise, and they are gone. Other peoples have sprung up and held their torch high for a time, but it burned out, and they sit in the twilight now, or have vanished. The Jew saw them all, beat them all, and is now what he always was, exhibiting no decadence, no infirmities of age, no weakening of his parts, no slowing of his energies, no dulling of his alert and aggressive mind. All things are mortal but the Jew. All other forces pass, but he remains. What is the secret of his immortality?" And I have the answer from Mark Twain. It is this: Shema Yisrael, Adonai Eloheinu, Adonai Achad. Thank you.
Hello, how you guys doing? I'm not here to deliver a speech.
Say your name and address, please.
Eunice. I just wanted to give one, just wanted to educate the crowd here a little bit. I just wanted everyone here to know that antisemitic also means Jews and Palestinians. Palestinians are Semites. So when you say antisemitic, and then the majority of the room here is Semitic. I am Semitic, so are the Jews, I mean, so are theirs. I'm sorry, that's all I really wanted to say. When you say antisemitism, please don't forget the other Semites in the room, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Seeing nobody else, move closer.
Second.
I'm not a resident of Wayne.
Okay, so can you please give your name and address?
Yes, I'm Mosfa.
Your address, please.
I live in Kinelon, Fort Fawn Hill Run.
Excuse me.
This is probably the first time I speak in front of people that knew, right? The gentleman had a beautiful speech. The Holocaust is happening in Gaza right now.
Yeah.
Right?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, please, let's control ourselves. We've been through this a couple times this evening.
When I say shame on you, is that Semitic?
I'm sorry, point of order. Was there a motion, a second?
No, there's no second.
I'm asking, when I say shame on you, is that Semitic? When I say what you're doing, killing children, is that Semitic? Is that Semitic?
At this point, I think you should entertain the motion.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Is that Semitic or antisemitic?
I would entertain the motion that was made at this point with the second.
Motion's been made to close. Mr. Duffy, is there a second?
Second.
I believe there was a second.
Listen, he said a lot of.
Thank you. Public portions closed.
A lot of uneducated people, a lot of uneducated people.
Sorry, public portions closed.
Uneducated, educate me. What's antisemitic?
Public portion is closed.
That's burning his blood, right?
Is there a motion? And, no, you're out.
No, no more speakers. We're done. So our public portion's closed.
Just a few words. I promise you to be worth.
I'm sorry, it's closed.
A few words for the President. I promise you to be worth it for both sides.
Nobody came up, there was a motion made.
I'm sorry, through the President, if I could.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Yes.
I move to reopen the motion because there are still residents who want to speak.
If it's been closed, the public portion is closed at this point, and it's closed for everybody.
Mr. Duffy? If I could, through the President. Listen, I understand everybody's frustration here, everybody's, I really do, I understand the frustration. We could be here all day going back and forth, whether it's the Israelites, it's Palestinians, we can go back and forth, but this is not the place to have, this is a school board meeting. This is about our children, and I believe that we have unequivocally spoken that this is about our children and that we will not have our children be swayed one way or the other, not by any teacher or any person sitting on this dais. And I'm sorry that nobody's, not, everybody's going to get up and be able to have their say to argue their one way or the other, but it's not going to happen tonight. That's not what this dais is for. It's not what this platform is for. It's for our children, and we've already made it perfectly clear that we are not picking one side or the other. And there's going to be. And if there's anybody on this dais that wants to argue with me, by all means, stand up and say it, but there was a motion to close the public portion, it was second, I'm sorry, but we're not going to have this back and forth anymore. This is about our children, not about the world events.
I made a motion to continue public portion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to extend the public portion.
A second, a second motion.
Second.
The resolution is to reopen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're trying to conduct the meeting. We have rules we have to follow, and I'm trying to do it to allow the public portion to see if we can reopen it.
Mr. President, when motions are made, we should be taking a roll call to make sure that we're doing that.
We're going to do that.
And I want to also be clear that the board has, and I've said that in this room many times before, the board has complete right, when someone becomes disruptive at the podium in the speech, to either remove the individual, to take a recess, or to close the meeting down itself. So I want everybody to keep that in mind as we continue to finish out the meeting tonight.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to extend the public portion. Any discussion? And second it. Roll call.
Sorry, there was a second to extend it or?
Yeah.
To extend it.
Not the support discussion, public.
I'll call roll. Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Mrs. Wintek?
Yes.
Mr. Batterhill?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No, I believe everything that needs to be said has been said.
Mr. Giardano? Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sir, you're off.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's on.
It's on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. It's not the first time I'm here before you. My name is Mike Gaver of 1051 Ratcher Road, okay? I live here in town, I have three daughters, I'm a father here, and as I told you the last time I was here in front of you, if I had to choose over as many times as I could, I'd always choose Wayne. And I always choose Wayne because this is the town where we have the most liberal and the most educated people living here, whether you're Palestinian, whether you're Indian, whether you're Japanese, whether you're Chinese, whether you're Jewish, and by the way, we don't hate Jews, okay? We do not hate Jews. We hate Zionism, that's it. Not Jews. Jews are our friends, okay? Every. Every, no, not the same.
Okay, once again. Okay, thank you.
I was hoping that we could work together as Jews and Palestinians together, okay? Thank you for your feedback, okay? Please, our kids have to live with each other.
Yo! Alright guys, they took a recess, they took a recess.
You're Palestinian, you heard?
That's it.
[inaudible].[1392.13]
(inaudible)
Hi, ladies and gentlemen! Ladies and gentlemen, board members! Everyone could take their seats! Yeah, just pull back. Yep.
Shaun's gotta get up here.
Police, that's what?
Yeah. How about we just limit it to the people who are up now?
Can you fire me carrying you over to the thing? It's gonna be an hour again.
Three more meetings.
Alright, head pass.
Alright. Call the meeting back to order.
It's limiting to whoever's standing.
Yeah. We're gonna limit it to public portion to whoever's in line at this point.
Yeah, let's...
Thank you. Sir.
All right, I continue to you? Here, I continue now, okay. What I was gonna say before, I got interrupted, I'm sorry about that, but what I was gonna say before is, I would like to see more reaching over to the other side and from both sides, okay? Because this is not Israel, this is America, okay? And this is Wayne, New Jersey, this is where we all live, and we all have to live together. Our children have to live together. And as I told you before, Mr. President, if I could choose any time, I would always choose this town over any other town, okay? No matter what our budget is, okay? I know so nobody likes that, but hey, truth be so... Truth be told, okay? We'll get by, we'll get by. I know this is some unprecedented and rough times, but we have to try really hard from our hearts, from our hearts, together, because we can overcome anything. This is Wayne, New Jersey. This is the highest and most educated human beings in the county, okay? Let's act like it. Thank you.
My name is Fatima Joseyan. I reside at 70 Normandy Drive in Wayne. I've been there for 35 years. Thirty-five years ago, my family moved to Wayne, and just a few years later, I went to Lafayette Elementary School to be tested for kindergarten. I remember very vividly that test, because it was very visceral for me. I was bilingual, first-generation American, and my teacher was not equipped to handle me. It was extremely upsetting for me to be misunderstood and dismissed in that moment of being told that the word that I was using didn't exist, and that I was not equipped to go to kindergarten that year. It's fine, these things happen. A few years later, I ended up leaving the school system due to mounting discrimination by the principal and staff that made it difficult for me to practice my religion and share my culture with my fellow students. This was during the first intifada in Palestine. My grandmother, who took me to school every day, was very visibly Muslim. I was a very visibly different kid. When I dressed up for Halloween, I was asked if I was a nun. I was not. I was wearing hijab. It was extremely painful for me to experience difference from all the other kids at school. Later, many years later, post 9/11, an arrow was shot through my bedroom window, right here in Wayne. The perpetrator was never found. I was sleeping, and it nearly killed my grandfather as he walked towards the bathroom in the hallway. I have never felt safe in Wayne since that moment. I have experienced microaggressions, discrimination, and outright aggression from Wayne residents. Right across the street, in the Dunkin' Donuts, I said Assalamualaikum to a friend of mine that I hadn't seen in years, and a man was so upset by this, he pushed his seat back and screamed, "Go back to your country!" We were both born in New Jersey, so it was really confusing for us. He ran out when I told him that I was born down the road, at what at the time, Wayne General Hospital. I have had so many people come up to me and say things like, "Your English is just so good," as if I didn't go to Wayne Public Schools. I have had, in my time as an EMT volunteering here in Wayne, I have had people look at me at the back of my ambulance and go, "Where are you from?" And I get to say, "Wayne." When will I be able to see that future where children will not be treated the way that I was treated in this school system? When will I feel safe to be visibly Palestinian and Muslim out in these streets, when any of these children feel this way? I just want to be secure in a future where every child can be supported by their public schools, and they will not have to feel the pain that I have felt for 35 years, living here in Wayne. Thank you.
Assalamualaikum, which means peace be upon you, and shalom. I'm here together with a friend that I just met, and I just want to remind everyone that we are all human. We all bleed, we all have pain, and we all should value one another. No one should be against anyone at this point. I know history repeats itself, and I don't want to go into that right now. I just truly want to speak from the bottom of my heart. My name, I said, is Khalidiya Mustafa. I am not a Wayne resident, but I have been an educator for over 25 years. I am a private school principal in Wayne. I resigned recently, and now I'm a professor, adjunct professor at William Patterson University in Wayne, and I teach education. And I care about children, all children, every single child. I don't care if they're Jewish, I don't care if they're Indian, I don't care if they're Palestinian, but yes, I myself was born and raised in this country, and I faced massive amount of discrimination. And as I am up here speaking today, I was not going to speak, but when I bumped into this beautiful woman, Bridgette, we said, "We're gonna go up and speak together, okay? We're not here to fight one another. It's not going to get us anywhere, okay? We need to remember humanity. We're both suffering. Yes, our homeland is not there anymore, yes, it's gone, people lived there before, birthright, whatever. Everyone's beliefs is theirs, and I respect everyone's beliefs, but there's no need for killing and murdering anyone." And especially at the crazy amount of killing that's happening right now to my people, okay? To our people. Everyone should be hurt for any child hurt, any child hurt. And in our schools, no, we are discriminated against. I'm not sure about Wayne schools, but I also was in Teneck, a principal there at a private school, where we had programs working along with Teneck High School to get to know each other. I worked with Jewish Voices, and we... I was in Sabbaths at homes with Jewish people, with about 30 girls from Al Ghazali High School, and we worked so well together. We raised enough money to build a homeless shelter in Hoboken, New Jersey. Why cannot we work together? Why are we here picking at each other? Yes, I respect, I respect the Jewish mother who came up here and spoke about her daughters and her fears, and I value her fears. You know what? We have those same fears, because our children are also anti-Semitic, yes. No one is pro-anti-Semitic, no one here. Like we said, we are Semites, okay? But it's not fair that our feelings are always turned to the side. It's okay, you know? We're really tired. And when you say that the news is, you're getting news from TikTok, and this and that and the other thing, well, no news is real. Don't tell me CNN is real. Do not. And I don't wanna, I'm not up, I'm not up here speaking about politics or any, I'm here because humanity needs us. We lost count of the, of the, okay, 40 babies, just as precious as the 5,000 babies, but let's stop losing that. Let's stop. How are we gonna fix anything? The world is big enough for all of us. I was in Palestine over this summer, and I went through the apartheid. My own son, who's 14-years-old in Wayne, had a gun pointed to his head by a soldier, for no reason at all.
Just for being healthy.
Do not talk, because this is the rules. And I'm sorry if I'm going over, but I really wanted to end this meeting well. We're all in pain. I love each and every one of you. I don't care what you set up here. I do not care what you set up here. I respect your feelings, and you respect mine. And that's how we need to be in the school systems. And I'm ready to work with anyone on this board to get a program set up in your high schools, and in your elementary schools, in all the schools, so we can get to know each other. This is something we need to do. Ignorance, it's ignorance. We are human. We bleed the same blood. We will all see our Maker, and we will all answer for what we did in this life. So can we please just try to love one each other, and stop with the hate? Both, I don't care, both sides, both sides. We need to change, and it has to come from the leaders. We see what's happening with our leaders. They do not care. They are putting hate and Islamophobia into, into the masses, okay? We are real people. We're just like you. We love, we love our children, we, we value education more than anyone I even know. We teach our kids. I can't, my dad was an immigrant, God rest his soul, and we were girls in this community, and he said to my, he said to me and my sisters, "You're going to school. I don't care what our community or culture or anything, you're gonna go." I'm so sorry. My partner, Bridgette, thank you. I love you all.
There's no like step stool. Okay, there's no step stool. Okay, you can hear me. I'm loud, I'm loud. I'm little, but I'm loud. Thank you. I met this lovely young lady, yeah, you're my partner. Again, not anticipating speaking tonight, our meeting, this nice woman, but the truth is, is that we are all hurting, and tomorrow morning, our children are going to be in the same building together, and though our children are hurting. As a daughter of a mother from Casablanca, Morocco, and a father who's American, I really can speak on both sides. Both sides, meaning I am a very, I'm sorry, Bridget Palmer on 22 Wheeler Road, okay, I forgot that. I'm a proud Jewish mother, but my mother, born and raised in a Muslim country, as a young girl, I was raised to understand Islam, to respect the culture, the love, and how my mother was raised in that country. And most importantly, she educated us that the King of Morocco, he did not allow Hitler to come in, and he actually protected the Jews. So when my mother came to this country, she learned more about hate and ignorance, because people are not educated. Me, as a Jewish mother, I pray for the hostages to be returned every single day. There's not a day that goes by that we're not praying. However, as a mother, I don't want to see killing of innocent people either. We are all in pain, and we must work together as the strong community that we are, the multicultural community that we are, to stand together, because our children do not know how to absorb this, understand it, and have coping mechanisms while they're supposed to get straight A's, do their extracurricular, get into college, and maintain a normal life. So it's us, the parents, as well as the Wayne Board of Ed, to make sure that our children are taken care of. How? By educating, by doing a duly program, by explaining to the children that Islam does not mean Hamas, that Islam is not terrorism, and that Jewish people, "We're not afraid of you," when educated the right way. I'm sorry, I'm a little shaky. And we are living together in the same road, and if my son is wearing a kippah, and she is wearing a...
Hijab.
Hijab, that we should say, "May God be with you, Ashallah, and may you be protected," because I want to feel protected too. So thank you for opening up this floor for us, and let's work together. And we want it to be positive. Thank you.
My name is Dorit Kressel. I live on Dartmouth Road in Wayne. I've lived, I've lived in Wayne for nearly 30 years, and all of my four children were educated in the Wayne school system and graduated from Wayne Valley. All of them are in or want to be in helping professions. One wants to be a teacher, one a psychologist, and two want to be in the legal profession. My mother is a Holocaust survivor. She immigrated to Israel some years after the war. My father was an American, and he was a scientist working on the Manhattan Project, and a proud American. My parents met in Israel, and I was born there and had dual citizenship since birth. I've lived in the United States most of my life. My sister is a 9/11 Twin Towers survivor. All of us who came here tonight, whatever side you're on, if you think there's sides, all of us who came here came with our own personal history, with our own fears, our sorrows about what is going on in the world right now, and our trauma about our own history and what is going on in the world. I hope that we are all here also as proud Americans, and one of this country's greatest freedoms is, of course, freedom of speech. However, the issue before the board that brought many people here tonight is the issue of the avatars on the student laptops. That issue was tabled based on legal advice, and I happen to be a lawyer, and I know that's what was said, but also after, in your words, that you had received communications that were factually incorrect. I want to be brief, and I want to be clear. I do not believe this is an issue of infringement of free speech. The devices in question are school board property, paid with our tax dollars, issued to students for their use for academic purposes. Nearly all of the affected students are minors. Some of the students might be 18-years-old, but almost everybody else is a minor. You, as the board, are responsible in loco parentis for our children. When they are here and they are learning, they should be in a safe learning environment and not feel any sense of discomfort or intimidation. If students want to exercise freedom of speech, they all have social media, they all have many other ways to express their freedom of speech. So that is the main point I wanted to make. I think this issue should not have been tabled. Fine that you've tabled it, you're going to discuss it further. I hope it comes back to the board, and the board takes action. I do not think this is a freedom of speech issue. I think it is something different from that. And lastly, I just want to say, this is not a forum for people to be shouting at each other, screaming, raising their voices, or being disrespectful. Thank you for your time.
I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. Oh, for the record, my name is Sarah Al-Bayali. I'm at 3 Vettery Place in Wayne. I was born and raised in Wayne.
Can I look closer at you, Mary?
Yeah, sorry. Can I hold it?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Okay, I feel like I'm at a counter right now. Okay, I've lived in Wayne my whole life. I felt that it was my duty to come to this meeting, not just because I'm an Egyptian-American who was raised with Palestinians my whole life, but because I am an educator. This is a Board of Education meeting after all. Well, I'm an educator in training, as I'm currently a student at Montclair State. I'm in one of the best teaching programs around, as we all know. As an educator, I am taught to create a community that promotes acceptance, respect, and kindness. Sister Khalidiya, who just spoke so beautifully, I love you, was my kindergarten teacher and my principal for so many years, and you can see where my passion started in teaching, she's a great role model, I love her, in kindergarten. I won't stand here and teach you, I spend all day teaching, I'm off, about the current events, although there is nothing I wish I could do more than stand here and be heard, as I am the voice for so many Palestinians who cannot be. as I am the voice for so many Palestinians who cannot be. Sorry. The hurt that I feel is so immense, as I'm sure it is for so many of you in this room, but I am going to stand here and defend my Palestinian brothers and sisters' right to express themselves. I am going to stand here and say that the Palestinian flag, oh, God, I'm sorry, I can't read, that the Palestinian flag and kaffiyah is in no way, shape, or form, and should in no way, shape, or form make anyone uncomfortable. The kaffiyah is part of Palestinian identity, and we in this country and this community are supposed to be promoting acceptance of identity and freedom of expression for everyone. We don't get to pick and choose, it is for everyone. Thank you.
Seeing no one, make a motion to close.
Close. Board member comments.
I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, because that's important. I, I'm only, I'm going to be real brief. I'm sad for everyone today, but I'm so hopeful for our children, because in these unsettling times, I just want to assure you that it is indeed crucial for the board and the community to come together. And this was awesome. I really enjoyed this. I just want to say that we promise that we, every day, we think of the children, all children, not one, one, one way or another way. We think of everyone's children, just like you do, and you have to trust us, because we are doing our best to make sure that the Wayne schools have a safe environment. Remember that. That's all I'm going to say.
My voice goes after a while here. Everybody here on the board sees what's happening. Everybody on the board feels for everybody in this room on all sides, but I want to remind everybody, what happened at the very beginning of this meeting tonight? We saluted AP students and their incredible academic achievements. I mean, I'm embarrassed about how barely I was in school compared to how some of these kids are doing. It's just unbelievable. But look at the kids who came up. We had women, young ladies, and hijabis. I'm not going to use names, because I want to pull them out, because they're always embarrassed to know that, that age level here. I recognized last names that were absolutely Jewish. I saw people who were Asian. I saw people who were black. I saw people who were Hispanic. Stand up here at this deus in front of here and be honored for their academics. And I watched them in the audience, and they were all smiling, and they were giggling with each other, and they were hugging each other, and they didn't look at what they were wearing, and they didn't look at the color of their hair or the color of their skin, and they didn't look at their last name, or whether they had a Star of David, or whether they had a Palestinian pin or a flag on. It didn't matter to them. That's the proof in the pudding of what the Wayne school system is doing. It's not perfect. It's a work in progress. For the people who have been here for years and seen discrimination, I'm sorry, and it truly touches my heart, and I hope that your story is an example of how we can make things better. We can't sit on our laurels, but we can do better here. And we just saw 24 young men and women do just that, and it didn't matter where they came from or their parents came from. All I know is they're going to go to schools that are really, really expensive, and I hope they get scholarships for them all here. So that's my point. Thank you.
I think this was a good exercise. I don't mind sitting through a meeting like this. I said, "I think this was a wonderful exercise. I don't mind sitting through meetings like this, where everyone gets up, tells their story, and lets everybody understand that we're all human and we all need to coexist." It's one of my favorite images with all the different types of religion spelled out into the word "coexist." I have friends on both sides. I'm married to a Muslim man. I understand my Jewish friends' pain. I understand my Palestinian brothers and sisters' pain. We, as a school district, yes, our, our purview and our task is to keep every child safe in our school, to make sure that when they walk into that building, they feel safe, they feel loved, they feel supported, and that they're there for their education. But as parents, I think we need you to also reinforce that at home. Please, I beg of you. I know you discuss hot topics in the House, but some of these hot topics are a little too much for our young people to understand, to process, and they come to school sometimes with a little high anxiety, and they might act out. But I have to say, based on what I've heard from administration, we don't have incidents of hate going on currently in our school. Like most of you have said, you should not be offended by a yarmulke, you should not be offended by a kaffiyah, a hijab, any of that. Those are not symbols of hate, those are symbols of culture. And no one should feel afraid to present themselves in their own culture, in their own skin. So yeah, I think we're, we're doing the best we can. We have codes of conduct, we have HIB rules. If anybody crosses that line, we'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis. I'm sorry, but I don't agree with changing the policy, little Google window, whatever. I, I mean, if someone puts something in there, they'll, they'll be treated the way everyone is treated under our policies for code of conduct or bad behavior. So I think we just need to continue to move forward and remind our children, remind each other, that we're all one race, the human race, and we need to love each other, we need to be more respectful and embrace everyone's understanding of what you're going through, because both sides are going through the same thing. Friends of mine are losing family members. Other friends of mine are losing people that they know. It's, it's happening to both sides. So if anything, maybe you should come together and embrace each other. The only thing I have a concern about is that club that the Muslim Student Association. I would like that looked into. I think we should make an effort to find an advisor. And by all means, the Jewish students should start a Jewish student association at our high schools. This is a great place for the kids to come together, and that was what the Muslim Student Association was meant to be about. I was very excited when it was started, and I only found out when I arrived here tonight that they lost their advisor and that it was canceled. So if we could make that effort, I think now is an important time to bring that back and to encourage the others as well.
Hi, I just will be very brief. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and being heard. I think that's very important. I think it was a good night, and we're leading by examples, and just know that our children on both sides are watching. What I teach, you know, in my house, and I have a little guy, nine years old, and some older ones, it's kindness first, and we don't care where you came from, and he will and we will treat you just the way you are. What you get is what you receive back. So thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody coming, and, you know, let's be the example for our children.
I wanted to thank everyone for coming. It seems like this week is Packed House Week. On Tuesday, I was at George Washington Middle School. It was their annual Veterans Day celebration, and I was in a room packed with heroes and students. Tonight, I'm in a room packed with members of our community, our Wayne community, and, and some, some people from, you know, our surrounding areas. So for the most part, I think everybody was respectful tonight. I mean, there were some, some people that weren't, so 95%, I guess, I'd say was respectful. But like the way we want to treat our, our classrooms, we want everybody, the staff, the students, to feel respected and to feel safe. So with that, I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you again.
So I just want to say, Wayne is no place for hate. We are all here, we take time and integrity to teach all of the children respect and honor and integrity. It's teaching. They don't all know. A number of you came up and said they don't know. That's okay. It's teaching. We go through, we look at those things. The administration is really good at finding where things are not right and helping to teach people what right is or deal with it. That's okay. If some of your children are suffering, if some of them are not coping, there are counselors to help. There are lots of counselors in the schools. Have them reach out to. There are support services for all of them, but we don't need to be in the situation that we are letting these things grow out of control, as other board members said. The actual number of instances are not very high and are reducing, and that's great. That's fantastic. That's because we are all aware, because you are aware, and because you are helping to teach your children too. If we continue to do that as a community, that will bring us together, and that will solve this. Along with that, I do want to say, more than 70 students gotten, got honored today for what they did, and that's fantastic. And both high schools got AP honor certificates. That is amazing. That is a result of the effort that we put into this school system and the effort that we put into these children. So I am really pleased with that as well, and congratulations to everybody on that.
As most of you might already know, I'm not one of very many words, unless I feel pretty heartfelt about what I have to say. I think I spilled, spilled my heart tonight, said what I had to say. I didn't go on with all of that, but that being said, I had some warm sounds for all of those who lost their sons.
Super quick. I wanted to also congratulate the new incoming board members who won their election, Mr. Pavlok, Mark, and Wendy. So congratulations.
Just a couple of quick things. One, congratulations to Mr. Faber, Mrs. Lamandry, who will be our new board members come January. I welcome them. I look forward to working with them, as well as the rest of the board. We have a lot of topics we have to work on. Real quick, no time to learn. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, both sides. We all do want one thing. We want peace. Everybody. I don't care who you are, what you are, what you look like, we want peace. We have a great community here, and we keep showing it. You have a school district that's ranked in the top 15 in the country. Think about that. Not a lot of people can say that. And we have a lot of really smart students. We have really great teachers who teach our kids, not telling them what to think, but guiding them. I remember a long time ago, when I graduated from the police academy back in the 80s, a long time, I'm old. There was a gentleman who got up and spoke, and he said, "Listen, go out there and change the world." But he said, "You change the world one person at a time. We can't change everybody overnight." You saw two people change the world tonight, who got up here and stood together. How articulate were they? Let's all take that into account. Let's all of us go out and try to change one person and get them to see. And you know what? This town, and this county, and this state are going to become a better place for all of us. And that's what it's about. One last thing about the, the club at Wayne Hills. Absolutely, the club is not disbanded, it's not off the books. That is not at all, we're looking for an advisor. Dr. Toback will speak to the administration up there. They already are aware of it, and they're already trying to see who they can get, but that is, that, what you guys were doing up there, I mean, is phenomenal. And thank you for the courage to get up in front of a full house. And to everyone, Happy Thanksgiving, and let's remember what Thanksgiving is about. Being thankful for everything we have. Have a wonderful night, and thank you very much.